Okay, it looks like we are right about at six o'clock, so we're gonna get this thing underway. We don't have a ton of attendees at this point right now. There's some more that are gonna be logging on here. But you know, I want to welcome you to, if you have questions and maybe don't feel like typing them into the chat bar and you wanna go ahead and ask them. Maddie, do they have access to be able to do that?
Um, no, they do not.
Okay.
Have access to their mics.
That's alright, so we're gonna, we'll go ahead and type them in. Johnny, are you still with us or? I don't know if she took off.
And.
Okay, Johnny Farrow is with us here tonight. I'm Wade Lockett. And welcome to our, this is our third or fourth town hall at this point right now. Staff has been back, got back this week and been very hard at work getting things ready for our students and just been overloaded with a bunch of information today relative to Edge Annuity, the curriculum that we're gonna be using this year. Have been working hard over the last couple of days getting Canvas set up, which is our learning management system. It's been really busy, so you're gonna have to please accept my apology for not getting a full slideshow put together, but at this point wanted to focus really just on parent questions and what are some things that we can answer for you at this point? There are a couple of things that I just want to make sure that I clarify before we go into, you know, just getting in directly into questions from parents. We got about seven or eight questions that came in and have some responses prepared for you as far as those questions are concerned. We appreciate you sending them in. We do ask you to continue sending in whatever questions you've got so that we have an opportunity to continue working through some of the, some of the things that we need to work through and get you the information that you need in order to feel comfortable going into the first day of school on Monday, September 14th. Couple of things that I want to make sure is clear right out of the gates. I do want to share a screen with you, the screen right here. This is a copy. Did that come up? Maddie, do you see that? Or Johnny, do you see that schedule?
Yes.
Okay. This is, this is a schedule. We actually sent this out to parents and students yesterday, or maybe it was a little bit earlier today. So you wouldn't have this in your hands quite yet, but we wanted an opportunity to make sure that you saw really what, what a weekly schedule for students looks like. I know we went over this last week. And this is gonna be pretty firm as to what, what that schedule looks like. One of the things that there's been a little bit of confusion over that we've, we've realized is that, you know, we've got first and third periods on Tuesdays, fifth and seventh period on Wednesdays. But we want to clarify that seventh period is your student's AG period. If that hadn't already been clear, it's not gonna be first, third, fifth, seventh period and AG. Seventh period actually is student AG classes. The other thing that we wanted to clarify here, by the way, you know, well, you're gonna get a copy of this in the mail shortly. And we'll, we'll do everything we can to clarify this as much as possible. We're planning on actually doing a town hall with students next week to answer any students that questions might have. We know that they're feeling kind of the anxiety of the school year starting to and have some of those questions and haven't had them answered. So we want to put that out to students as well and give them an opportunity to ask their questions. And we'll explain this to them at that time. One of the other questions that's come up quite a bit is attendance. And do students only need to be checking in with the two classes that they have live opportunities with their teachers on, you know, on Tuesdays? So on a Tuesday, for instance, with the schedule you're looking at, a student will have a live opportunity virtually, but a live opportunity for their first period class and a live opportunity for their third period class. Does that mean that they do not need to go in and log into their classes for fifth and seventh period? The answer is they do. They need to log into every single class every single day. The state is requiring us to take that attendance and there are learning opportunities for every single class every single day. So these applied learning hours and teacher office hours, that is time for students to be logging into, for instance, on a Tuesday, they have their live meeting on first period, their live meeting in third period. They'll have their lunch and then from one to three would be time set aside for them to be able to log into their fifth period and seventh period, see what those activities are, see what the discussion boards are, see what the questions are. And then have their teachers available to them in office hours as well during that same period of time. So we are still required to be taking attendance for, for every student, for every class, every single day. That's four periods a day, five days a week, including Mondays. Mondays when there are no live meeting opportunities, there will still be activities, instructional activities and learning opportunities for students on Mondays that will be pushed out by their teachers. So we just want to make sure that everybody was, was very clear on that. The schedules are set. You know, I guess at this point right now, like I said, I want to focus this on, on parent questions and what are some of the things that are still weighing on your minds? What are some of the questions that we can answer for you going into, to next week? Some of the things that came in specific to Fox Online. And I'm gonna start here with, with some of these questions as, as they're the, the most common ones that are coming in. How is the login info or sign-on info being communicated to parents and students who are doing the online school? Tomorrow, we have a meeting with our online teachers and with some district admin and high school admin to actually kind of iron all of that stuff out. The information relative to that, we are guessing will likely come from, directly from the online teachers. Like we said, we've, we've committed four teachers from the high school to the online classes for this year. And we would, and students will actually be assigned one of those four teachers as their AG teacher for the year. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how that plays out. Students are still encouraged to reach out and stay in contact with their, with their regular AG teacher who they've had, you know, in some cases for the past couple of years. They will be encouraged to continue to stay in touch with that teacher as we know that's a very strong support system for them. But we want to make sure that this information is coming out from their AG, their online AG teacher. And so that information is coming and hopefully we'll have an answer for that by tomorrow. Is there a draft daily schedule for the all online students? Not yet. However, that schedule is also, the online schedule is also created or intended to be the most flexible schedule that there is. And so though there's not a set specific schedule, we also don't necessarily fully expect there to be a set specific schedule for the online school. That, that is created for maximum flexibility.
Can I chime in there too?
Please, yeah.
And the, what makes the Fox Online program so flexible is that it doesn't include a daily synchronous opportunity like our Fox Hybrid program. And so it's truly intended to, to be student driven in terms of how it is worked through. So there'll be opportunities to engage with the teachers through office hours, but they won't be leading synchronous learning opportunities like our Fox Hybrid program will.
Excellent. Will teachers be checking in each day with students? And this is on the, again, these are specific to the online question. Will teachers be checking in each day with students? The answer to that is no. Students are gonna be, it's gonna be a little, one, a little bit more flexible and two, really the whole year, whether it's hybrid or online, the responsibility for a lot of this is, is on the students. We're gonna give every bit of support that we possibly can, but teachers will not be checking in with students daily in the online program like they would in the hybrid program. So just, I think that's, that's just the, the most straightforward answer we can give there. What will the first day of school look like with Fox Online? That will likely be up to each family. You know, when the student can log in and when the student can take a look at their classes. But again, that's gonna be some, those are gonna be some details that we're gonna try to put together in the meeting tomorrow so that we have something a little bit more firm for the online students. But the online process really is a little bit more controlled by the student and the family. And so what that first day will look like could very much be up to, you know, when the family or when the student can log in and, and kind of go through the process that the online teachers put together for them on that first day. Should we expect to receive correspondence/introductions from teachers first thing Monday morning, the 14th? Or could that come sooner? We definitely expect that to come to you before the 14th. It will, it will not be later than the 14th. You will be able to log on and your first day of, or online students' first day of classes will be the same day as the hybrid students' first day of classes. So we, we fully intend to have that, that information out to you by next week. We understand this is an online platform with a lot of fluidity. However, will there be actual check-in schedules/re requirements? This will only be if it's needed. Again, this will be something that we, we will, our teachers will continue to assess, see how students are doing. And it's gonna be kind of an as-needed basis where if students are struggling to progress and they're not making, you know, the adequate progress in a timely fashion, or maybe they're not logging on, or maybe they're not keeping up in one way or the other, then, then yes, there will be a, there will be teachers reaching out to them, trying to make sure that we are providing every support that we can to make sure that those students can be successful. So so that's, you know, those, those are the, the questions that are coming relative to the online program at this point. With our meeting with, with district admin and with our high school admin, tomorrow, we, we hope to have more questions and more information for our online program tomorrow and hopefully even get that out to you via email tomorrow. Certainly no later than next week. General, more general questions. Do all CTE classes fall into the exception category of returning to limited in-person instruction before the metrics are met to allow all to return in hybrid? If so, can a student opt out of the early in-person returning and continue solely online until the county metrics are met? The earliest time that those opportunities would even be available would be probably mid-October. So, you know, at that point, will a student have the opportunity to opt out of that early in-person return and continue solely online? Until the, are we gonna require students to come in prior to the metrics? No, we will not require students to come in prior to the metrics being met. Those will just be earlier opportunities. And again, at the earliest, it wouldn't be until mid-October. So I hope that answers that question. I think, I think we're getting at what, what that question was asking. Are students required to have both camera and microphone turned on at all times during class time? No. I guess the real simple blunt answer to that is students are not gonna be required to. We do think that that would be the easiest way for our teachers to gauge the engagement of students. We believe that, you know, teaching and learning, certainly learning requires a social engagement and, and that's a way for students to show that engagement. But at the same time, we know that, you know, the camera on and talking in class and facing every single student that's sitting in front of you right there, sometimes that'll cause some anxiety for students. And we're hoping that our students can just communicate with teachers, but that's something that they're not comfortable with. And it will not be required for our students to have their cameras and microphones on during class. Is there concrete end dates yet for the last day of school for seniors, graduation day, last day of school for all other students? We have recently put that question to our district. We, we don't have an adjusted district calendar at this point right now. We do know that our HR department is gonna start putting that together. He's working with a couple of other administrators in the district to try to make sure that we can get a, a schedule, an adjusted schedule put together. As we do know that, you know, we're starting the school year a week late. And that's going to adjust instructional time for teachers. It's gonna, it's going to impact our, our quarters and ultimately our semesters and the way those things are lined up at this point right now. So we do believe there's gonna need to be some sort of adjustment to our schedule. But that is, that has not been put together at this point right now. As soon as we get it, we will make sure it's posted. We will make sure it's out to our parents and it's out to the community. So everybody knows what our adjusted schedule looks like. So at this point, right, that's, those, that's, those were the questions that came in prior to the meeting. At this point right now, I think there's a few other questions that are coming up and I can take a look. How many times this year will we have finals? At this point right now, we're looking at trying to get through the quarters. We've had conversations with our teachers about what they want finals. Well, we, we had conversations with the admin to begin having conversations with the teachers to discuss what we want finals to look like, what we would want finals weeks to look like. I simply do not have a specific answer for you at this point right now. The way that it would line up is that it would look, it would, it would normally look like we would have four at the end of each quarter. There would be the possibility for a final. But in this model, that may not be the best thing. And so we want to make sure we have some input from our teachers who understand how those, those processes look for students and would work out best for, for their classes and for their students. So I don't have a specific answer for that, for you on that one quite yet. But, but I, we are talking about it and we will get that one figured out. For those of us in areas where internet access is come and go, are there alternative options for the students who miss out on something due to internet issues? Alternative options for students who miss out on something due to internet issues? We are, we are trying to give our students as much flexibility as we can possibly give them. If you communicate with teachers and let them know that you've got spotty internet and sometimes it's difficult to get things turned in on time, we are hoping that, and expecting that our teachers will be flexible with that. We know that, that this is not a normal circumstance. And that in our district, which is an enormous district, takes up a huge geographical area, there are some spots where we don't get great internet. We are working at this point right now individually to try and locate specific families and students that don't have great internet access and trying to get them either hotspots or find ways to get them connected. But we would also hope that students and families are communicating with teachers that if they don't have great internet access, that maybe there's some flexibility. Certainly flexibility with due dates and, and stuff that, that needs to come in. So I hope that answers that.
I would just follow up that any synchronous opportunities again will be recorded and, and students won't be held accountable for anything that they couldn't access via a recording or a, a discussion within the, the chat features within the classroom. So just make sure you're communicating with families like Mr. Lockett, or with teachers like Mr. Lockett.
I think that's gonna be one of the most important things too. And I think our teachers are, are going to spend some time in that first week really trying to, you know, do some community building, having conversations with students, setting that stuff up. So communication is gonna be key through this process. Having students and parents communicating with teachers on a, on a weekly, if not even more often basis is gonna be really pivotal to, to student success here. So, and just understanding each other's conditions and each other's environments and what's gonna work best for each individual student. So when is the school and district going to address the students' IEP, students' IEP and needs? IEP meetings are gonna be scheduled as normal. They're gonna be virtual. But our teachers also know what the IEPs of their students are and they will be making modifications for students based on those IEPs. So that, that part of our teaching and learning will not, will not change. That will be consistent. Will there be a lot of care and connection in the first week of school? Yes. That, that is the expectation is that there's going to be a lot of, again, community building, communication, trying to figure out what the individual needs of students are, the individual needs. Sorry, it's been a long day. I'm having trouble talking right now. The individual needs of families and what, what we can do to accommodate those needs. So yes, we, we do know that our freshmen are going to also need some extra attention and, and just getting adjusted to high school and understanding their teachers and understanding the expectations of their classes. So that stuff is happening. We do have some onboarding videos that, this actually kind of goes into the next question as well. We do have some onboarding videos that we are going to email out next week. So parents and students will have an opportunity to see what Canvas looks like, to begin working or, or playing around with Canvas a little bit. Hopefully we'll be able to get you your logins to Canvas as soon as possible. So you'll have an opportunity to kind of move around in that before, before school, if you want to. Otherwise, you can wait till the 14th and, and there'll be some more onboarding stuff on Monday, the 14th as well. That first day schedule, Monday, the 14th, is actually coming in the letter that's, that they'll be in the mail as well shortly. So hopefully that answers that question about more information about Canvas. It is coming. There will be videos coming. We plan on pushing all of that stuff out next week. The second part of that question that I missed.
Sorry, it was about tablet distribution and books.
Tablet distribution. So Chromebook distribution will be next week. It will be Tuesday, the 8th. I believe the hours were one to six. I think there was also an email that might have gone out about that. But I believe, I believe it was one to six on Tuesday is when we're gonna be doing Chromebook checkout. So that might be posted online and I would imagine that it is posted online. We can check that for you. Will there be a different amount of students from a hybrid school year to an online school year per class? Mrs. Farrow, you know the schedule a little bit better than I do. Are there gonna be more students in a hybrid class than they're going to be in an online class?
And so we generally operate off of a goal of a 30 to one ratio. So 30 students to one teacher at a time. The difference is, and we're using that same ratio to, to staff our Fox Online program as well. The difference with the hybrid though is that I can't have 30 kids in a classroom at a time when we do have the opportunity to come back for live instruction. And so that's the reason for the AMB cohort that separates what the whole class period would be about 30. And on that, the average classroom size, we have some classes that can go a little bit bigger and some that, that have to go smaller just based on the square footage of the classroom. And so on an A day, you would expect to see about an average of 15 students when we're back to live instruction. And so that's the difference for an A day and B day, once we come back into in-person schooling and the hybrid model. Whereas the classes in Fox Online will just remain steady at a goal of 30 to one. I don't, they're not actually at 30 right now. We're just under it, about 25 per teacher. And so I think really manageable case loads. And, and that's always our goal. We never want to have class sizes that are significantly bigger unless it's appropriate for that type of class. So we can usually go a little quite bigger in classes like choir and band and PE, but not this year.
Thank you. Will instruction and appropriate curriculum be delivered in the basic skills class for all students? Yeah, we, we expect that instruction and curriculum to be geared towards those students and we don't expect that to change for those students. When it comes to a point of being able to bring students back live, we, we know that that's, that's best for certain populations of students. And this is one of those groups that we hope to be able to get back live sooner rather than later. But until, until that happens, yes, we, we expect to be delivering the same, the same level of instruction to those students that we've been able to provide to them over the last couple of years. We will be doing it virtually as best we can. And I would encourage you to reach out to your teachers, your students' teachers as well to be able to see, you know, what exactly that will look like in a, in a virtual environment. Anything to add to that, Johnny?
I think that the comprehensive distance learning model presents some unique challenges for our students who receive special education services, especially in our basic skills program, our functional skills program and our behavior support programs. And so I think that that is gonna really rely heavily on, on working with the case managers to try and make sure that we are problem solving those individual needs as quickly as possible because we know push-in isn't gonna look the same. It's, it's, being in class with their peers is gonna look different in a virtual setting. And so we just really want to use the IEP process to develop individual plans for your students.
Thank you. It looks like there was another question that was sent in via email at one point. I saw a slip saying schedule change forms have to be submitted by September 7th. Does this mean we can't change our classes after school starts? If we still can, how do we do that? What I would suggest is if there are classes, I think you can go to a website that's, the Silverton High School website. And there's a button at the top that says, you know, if you want to change classes, boom, hit this. And it will, it will direct you to a, to an area that you can make a schedule change request. And so feel free to go to the website and do that. And we will, we will listen to all requests and, and work with you to make sure your schedule is something that will work for you.
I'd like to follow up on that. So the reason for, normally we have about a two-week window to make any changes to a student schedule at the start of any particular term, but with the reduced number of weeks we have, that doubles the instructional time they might be missing if we need to move. And so we're gonna really ask our teachers to prioritize that first week and identify if students are in the wrong placement so we can get them in the correct placement right away. But any choice schedule changes need to take place before school starts. And that's two reasons. One is the reduced amount of time that we have in front of kids. So then now being on a quarter system. But the, the biggest reason is that, again, we're trying to manage cohorts so that when we do have the opportunity to go back to live instruction, we, we are limited by the numbers we can put in each individual classroom. And so those are, we will make changes when you're in the wrong placement, when you're not in the right level. But just choice changes will only be if we have room. And, and so just please bear in mind with our counselors who are working really hard to, to manage those requests that that's what they're up against. It's truly a seat, a number of seats I can put in front of a particular teacher on a particular day based on the alphabet. And so it, it is much more complicated than it is in a traditional school year.
What if, what if I don't drive? Can I walk up to get a Chromebook? We, we would prefer that you drive up or find somebody that you can come with to take you through and, and pick up your Chromebook. If for whatever reason you can't do that and you need to walk up, we would ask that you wear a mask and stay, you know, safely distanced. But, but our preference, if at all possible that you can, please, please, please try and get into a vehicle and, and come through. It's just a lot more efficient and a lot faster.
I would also suggest making an appointment with our office manager so that we can accommodate that request. If, if you, if you truly don't have a ride and, and need help, we want to make sure that you are safe. And so we don't want you waiting in line with a whole row of cars. And so we would be happy to work out an alternative location if we need to.
Always willing to work on whatever little problems exist, we can find a solution. What about books needed for class? Will students be able to check them out before September 14th? Or is it all online? Now, we, we do have some teachers that have already requested to use some of their books and have those checked out. Your teachers will get in touch with you if you need to check out a book. And then we, we will create a, a date and time for you to be able to check those out. So as soon as we know what needs to be checked out and for what classes, we will make sure that you are aware of that. And students that are in a specific class that need to check out a book, that, that you're aware of that and, and we'll be able to do that in a timely fashion. Can we reach out to teachers starting now or we, do we need to wait until next week? What, teachers are back. So if you've got email addresses and you would like to, or get online and find a teacher's contact information, you are certainly welcome to start contacting teachers if you've got questions and, and need some answers. Teachers are also a great resource. If you've got questions and you feel comfortable having that conversation with a teacher, they're a great resource to kind of give us that feedback so that we can either make adjustments or begin to focus on, on fine tuning some. Um, begin to focus on on fine tuning some things that that maybe we've looked past. So um you are certainly welcome to start contacting teachers uh at this point.
And I would just ask for a little flexibility with them. Uh, they are being inundated right now with lots of new systems and new resources. And um it may take them a a day or two to reply to you. It doesn't mean they don't care and they're not um. Eager to start interacting with families and students, but they are just getting a fire hose of information right now. And so um a little flexibility would be appreciated there.
I I think that's a great point when when we talked, you know, kind of open to this whole thing with just. What this week has been like to begin with for teachers, just uh just in just being. Um, pummeled right and left with with new information and they've had amazing attitudes and they're working their tails off. Um, and and very committed to making sure that uh when day one comes around, they're prepared and ready to to deliver for our students. So I think that's a great point, Mrs. Farrow. Please just be patient with them as well. Um, who do we contact if an online class is missed due to a medical dental appointment? I I mean, you know, these these questions are, I'm sorry, these these classes are created to be flexible for you. So, you know, you you can check in at your leisure. Um, as far as those classes, if you miss an online session, that's okay. If a student misses an online session, that's okay. Log in later, uh, watch the recording of the class if a if a recording exists. Um, or take a look at, you know, what the teacher has. I guess, put out for a student to be able to either read or questions to respond on a discussion board or videos to watch or activities to um to finish. Uh, it does not need to be attended live, though that is definitely the best opportunity for the student to learn the material, ask their questions in real time. So we encourage the live opportunities if students can do that. Um, but we also understand that that not everybody's going to be able to make those live opportunities every single time. Again, this is a different situation. Um, it's a different different kind of learning. Uh, it's a different model of learning. And and this is built for us to be flexible and built for for you to be able to uh be flexible within your day as well. So Johnny, anything to add to that?
Uh, I I guess it's hard to kind of differentiate sometimes in the questions if we're referring to Fox hybrid during distance learning. Or if we're referring to Fox online. And so if it's Fox online, again, there isn't going to be live um daily interaction with teachers. And so there's just going to be a tremendous amount of flexibility in terms of when your student accesses information and resources. So.
And I think it's also.
Kind of confusing terminology with with um how school is starting, so.
Well, and once we get to the hybrid model, right, and we are back in school. Um, that will be more traditional. So when we are in school, in person, face to face, then we will need to call our attendance officer to make sure that she knows that you aren't going to be there on that particular day. So that will be um a little bit more normal, I suppose. Uh, but in the, but in the online and virtual world, um, that's built for us to be flexible. Other.
Uh, Sir Lockett, there's some questions in the chat. Uh, I'd be happy to read them to you a little different this time.
Yeah.
Uh, the the first question is, what time does school start on the fourteenth?
So let's actually, I can, let me bring up day one's schedule here. Perhaps. I'm going to share my screen with you so you can see what day one's schedule will look like. Share. Can everybody see, can you see my screen there, Johnny?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh on day one, we will. Meet with our our advisory groups at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, this time is going to be used to kind of uh reunite, uh make introductions for freshmen. Um, there'll be an introduction to Canvas. So students will have an opportunity to look at what our learning management system looks like. Our teachers will will teach them how to log into their Canvas. There'll be um some time to to answer questions and whatnot. At ten o'clock, they will go into their first period class. And it'll just be a short meeting with their first period teacher, just kind of an introduction. Hey, how you doing? Good to see you. Nice to meet you. Welcome back. Um, just an opportunity for students to get a little bit comfortable in front of their classes, in front of their teachers. Um, that'll only take about ten or fifteen minutes for the first period. At ten thirty, then they'll meet with their third period class. Uh, same kind of situation. And then at eleven, they will meet with their fifth period class. And um then it'll, after that, at eleven thirty, there's going to be a Canvas video. There's going to be a little bit of a scavenger hunt game, and that's really just to kind of get them introduced to Canvas, get them to understand how to use, get them familiar with interacting with Canvas. Um, and then have a chance to kind of explore Canvas a little bit. At noon, they'll meet back up with their AGs. Um, their AG teachers will be able to answer any questions for them that they might have had through that process. Um, answer for them what tomorrow is going to look like. How do they log into their classes tomorrow? Um, you know, we're trying to uh create the easiest way possible for our students to log in and and meet with our teachers. Um, the the easiest way that we feel like we we can do it is for our teachers to create their own Google Meet codes that is really just. S H S and their name, and then students can just go in and join those meetings when their class is in session. Uh, and then log into their Canvas and be able to do things uh that way. So. Um, we'll give you some more details on that early next week. We're getting a a little bulleted sheet, simple uh login sheet put together for for students and for parents. Um, and we hope to have that out to you by early next week. So it should be a really easy step by step. This is how you log in. This is how you meet with your class. This is how you get into your Canvas, um so on and so forth. Um, so that's what the fourteenth is going to look like. Again, you're going to get this schedule next week. Um, I think it went out in the mail either today or it's going out tomorrow. Uh, but you will get this very soon. So. Other questions, Johnny?
Yeah, uh, there's a new one in the chat uh bar that came up. Uh, but before that, there was a question about devices and whether or not students are required to use campus. Uh, Chromebooks and devices, and I think our tech support answered it really well in saying that it's best to use our district devices. Because we have filtering provided on that and can help monitor what students are accessing online. Um, some safeguards in place to ensure that what they're seeing is age appropriate and um that we're not seeing any triggers that might put students at risk. So. Um, just appreciated Maddie or or tech wizard on today answering that question.
Thank you, Maddie, again.
And then the the next question was, I don't get the quarters. There's four quarters. What do those mean?
Okay, so good question. Um, we typically run on on semesters, our our semester schedule. Um, semester is typically eighteen weeks. Um, and we run two semesters. So our full school year is a thirty-six week school year. Um, this year we are running on a on a, and during that time, we will run a daily seven-period schedule. Each period is about forty-eight minutes. This year, in order to try to make things more manageable for students and try to make things more manageable for teachers, we feel like fewer classes is easier for them to manage. And so students are still going to, well, in this case, they're going to be taking eight classes throughout the year as opposed to seven. Um, but we're going to only do four classes per semester. Which means that we're going to double the amount of instructional minutes on a daily basis. Uh, but they will get a full year's worth of instruction over an eighteen-week period of time. Um, for us, because we typically break our classes at semester, it means now that we're breaking our classes in quarters. So every nine weeks is going to be equivalent to what would traditionally be a full semester's worth of. Um, of of class, of coursework. Um, so that's that's essentially what that means. Nine weeks is going to be equivalent. This year to what eighteen weeks would have been last year. Um, and we will be issuing credits at at quarters as opposed to at semesters this year. Johnny, is there, is there a way that you might be able to kind of clarify that? I'm I'm. Hoping.
Uh, I think the only clarification to add to what's different in terms of a semester and a quarter system is. That our um, sorry, got distracted there, been Sir Lockett laughing. I was. I probably froze up on your screen, so uh. Is that our AG, we're including that as a class period. And and students normally have a period in their day that is advisory groups, but uh. It, but it's not counted in the periods one through seven, for example. So AG, again, this year is is virtually all online. It's regardless of when we come back or not, uh, those interactions will take place online. And then the the period eight. Uh, which will take place in the third and fourth quarter first, that period eight will also be all. Virtually and online so that we can really dedicate enough time for each each class period for for new instruction and learning. And and I know the question comes up a lot. Why is it um periods one, three, five, and seven in the first two quarters and periods two, four, six, and eight? And the the second half of the school year. Uh, and that's all on me because a traditional block schedule is usually built that way. And I built our schedule before I realized that we were never going to be in a traditional block. And and so I know it's confusing and I I am apologize profusely. Uh, that um it just was too time-consuming to change it by the time I realized it. And so. Um, please keep asking questions about why it's odd classes versus even classes.
And not just, not, and not just time-consuming, but there was also a need to get that master schedule put together and get classes out to students and. Um, you know, a lot of this stuff happened uh kind of at the eleventh hour, uh when we knew what our class schedules could look like and and. Um, a lot of things had to fall into place very, very quickly. And Mrs. Farrow, working very, very diligently and very hard to make sure that that. Um, every student was entered into the master schedule and everybody had an opportunity to pick up their schedule during registration. Um, that was how it played out, and then we went back and realized that, oh geez, sorry.
Um, I I'm not afraid to admit when I'm wrong, so uh. I, again, I apologize for that confusion, but I think that is probably adding to some of the confusion when we talk about quarters too. So I'm happy to own that.
Is there another question there?
Looks like one. Um, have email addresses been assigned and sent out to freshmen? Where do we find them? I can answer that.
I don't know the answer to that. Um, I think we can certainly check with our tech department, but I don't know that they have been assigned at this point. They may, they may have been.
Same email addresses. So if you have been in our district, all of your uh email addresses and login information is the same. If you're new to our district, um, please feel free to reach out to us and we'll help get you that information. But if you're coming to us from any of our district schools, that stuff won't be any different.
Okay, perfect. Other questions?
That's all I see right now.
To the chat bar, and I do not see it.
Yeah, that's that's all I see right now.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate you coming on and and asking questions. Again, if there are other questions that you've got, please feel free to email those to us. Um, you know, we're we're making more progress every day. Um, our teachers, like I said, are are working hard to make sure that they have a a classroom ready to go, their curriculum and their canvas ready to go. So when your students arrive um on day one, you know, the nature of of being a teacher and a student can take over. Um, they can begin building those relationships and and enjoying class just in a in a different environment this year. Um, you know, I I want to leave you with with what we started with last week and and that is to um, you know, ask you to. Don't label the school year so early. Uh, go into it with a positive attitude and and encourage your students to go into it with a positive attitude. Um, and let it surprise you with all the great things that are coming. Uh, we've got a dedicated staff. We've got amazing students. And uh, we're excited about what we're putting together for you right now. So please continue reaching out with your questions so that we can continue fine-tuning things. Um, because we know that uh we don't have every answer at this point right now. Um, and there's going to be some things that are going to be. Uh, we're going to come first day, realize that, oh, gosh, we didn't, we didn't take care of this and we need to take care of it. So. If you think of it before we do, please send that question out. Please send that comment out. Um, so that we can continue to fine tune this process for you, for our teachers, for our students. Um, and and give you guys the best, uh, give our students the best experience that we can possibly give them come September fourteenth. So.
Sir Lockett, we just had one more coming.
Sure.
Uh, can teachers still help kids that have an IEP online?
Can, can teachers still help kids that have an IEP? Can they help? Oh, are you talking about the online school, the online classes?
Uh, I I I'm not sure. I think that they're um probably referring to the the general end. But yes, our teachers are still going to honor IP's.
Yeah.
And to help, and in fact, our classified staff. Our our classified staff is also going to be standing ready to help support students. So our incredible EAs. Our educational assistants that we know are such a vital part to students receiving special education services. And they will have unique opportunities to push in and and work with kids as well. And so. Um, whether you're in Fox hybrid or Fox online, you will still receive your services.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's important to know that those services regardless of what school, uh, whether it's online, hybrid, or, you know, kind of the. Hybrid virtual start, um, those services don't, don't, they're not interrupted. Um, they will continue to have those services. They will continue to have those supports. Um, I think Mrs. Farrow answered that question perfectly. So, thank you, Johnny.
And then another question. So other than September fourteenth, are Mondays free?
No, um, Mondays are still an instructional day for students. Teachers will be pushing out, so they're they're. They're not a day off for anybody. Our teachers will be using that time um to work together to identify certain. Um, pattern students, uh, areas that they need to fine tune their instruction. Um, have have their meetings as well, but they will also, on their canvases, push out modules that students will have to log into. And um, see their activities, see their work. They are going to be logging into all four of their classes every single day, including on Mondays, and there will be activities. Um, questions, warm-ups, um, objectives for the week. That stuff will be available to them on Mondays, and they they will be responsible for. Um, uh, for logging in and and taking care of that work. So Mondays are not a free day. It's just a day, it's just a day that they won't have.
No lives.
They won't have live meetings. I'm sorry. Did I interrupt you?
No, you you were just going to add it. And it, the next follow-up is what time are they done on Mondays? Um, again, all of that is going to be at the discretion of your own family and and how this student is working. And so there's not going to be any live interaction with teachers other than office hours. Uh, five days a week, they'll be able to ask, ask their teachers questions and get support using the office hour model. Um, but in terms of of structured class time, that'll be entirely up to your student. And another question.
If you're, if you're looking for a real specific answer as far as that one is concerned. Monday morning, you know, I might wake up at six o'clock in the morning and log into my classes and um, and and. Do you take a look at my objectives for the week, um, for my classes, maybe log into a discussion board, a warm-up question, maybe do an activity? I I might be done by by ten o'clock, by nine o'clock. Uh, where Mrs. Farrow, you know, she, maybe she likes to sleep in on Monday mornings and she doesn't get up until nine-thirty. Um, and she doesn't log in, you know, until the afternoon because uh she has to, you know, take care of the chickens and take care of her kiddos and help them with their work. And, you know, take care of her brothers and sisters, what have you. Um, and so she doesn't get her work done until, you know, six o'clock in the evening. Both of those are okay. Um, and and that's not just for Monday. That would really go for any day of the week. All of those are okay. The students are just going to have an opportunity for live instruction with their classes Tuesday through Friday.
Uh, the questions are coming in now. So uh, do we have to let teachers know if kids want to do Fox online or Fox hybrid?
So. We were hoping to have known that by August ninth. Um, and there have been, you know, since that date when when the commitment to either the hybrid or the online had been made. Um, there have been some adjustments that have been made here and there. Um, if you haven't already let the district know whether you wanted to be a Fox online or Fox hybrid, you were defaulted to the Fox hybrid system. That would have been really good information to know earlier because we did dedicate specific staff to the online school based on how many students requested. To be a part of the Fox online. So um, if that's a question that you still have, I would encourage you to reach out to your counselor. And um, and have that conversation with your counselor, with your student's counselor, I'm sorry.
Next question, are courses such as welding or other electives online exclusively until October fifteenth?
Are courses like welding, so the the courses like welding, our CTE courses like welding and such, they are. Quarter-long semester-long courses. So they aren't just going through October fifteenth. They will go along the same schedule that the rest of our courses go along. What we're saying, uh, when it comes to the the. What we're saying when it comes to the, the middle of October piece is there's guidance from the state that might allow some of those students to return to in-person learning a little bit earlier. So they will still be on the same schedule, they just might have an opportunity a little bit earlier to come in and actually do some hands-on welding and some hands-on, some hands-on work. I, I hope that answers that question. The class will not be over on October fifteenth, our first quarter ends on November thirteenth. Whether they come into live instruction with some welding prior to that or not.
Yeah, and I think that date is still to be determined. And so there are certain metrics that we have to meet and some other systems that we have to make sure are up and running before students might have the opportunity to come in. So there is no hard date for when there may be CTE small group instruction. We are working towards that though.
And that would just be the early, that would be, that would be the earliest, earliest opportunity they would have to be back in person.
Yes.
Other questions? Mrs. Farrow? Are there other, I'm sorry, are there other questions? I don't have access to the chat bar.
I was reading an email, so no, sorry, that was the last question.
Okay. Well, again,
It looks like one more in the Q and A. Oh, just says, thank you for offering this format for questions and information.
Absolutely, it is our pleasure. We are going to continue doing this, we will do this again next week. We're hoping even actually right before this to, to have an opportunity for students to get on and answer some of their questions as well. So again, we would like to thank you all for being here. If you've got questions, please send them our way. Know that we're thinking of you, know that we're working hard to make sure this works out well for students and for families. We'll do everything, everything we can to give you all a great experience. So thank you so much, have a great evening.